I call this meeting of Sylvania City Council for September 3, 2024. Please call the roll.
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Hanam.
Yes.
Mr. McCann.
Here.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Ms. Dow.
Here.
Mrs. Westfall.
Mrs. Westfall is out of town and excused.
And I'm here. That was not a yes or no vote. Sorry about that.
And welcome to our attendees tonight. We invite you to join us on our Pledge of Allegiance, this meeting led by Mr. Fry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Decisions to the agenda, I have none this evening. Mr. Fry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to set up a finance committee meeting sometime in October so we can add that somewhere on the agenda.
Make that 11A, Finance Committee, schedule meeting. The members of City Council. Hearing none. Mr. Sanford.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Miller.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schreier.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Shaw.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Bryning.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as changed?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the agenda for tonight's meeting is approved. Then item four is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting on August the 19th. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move approval of the meeting minutes from the council meeting of August 19th, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve to August 19th, meeting minutes as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance minutes approved. This is for first business item, item number five. It's a request from the Service Director requesting approval for requesting, recommending a proposal. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In July of this year, I have Department of Transportation updated their, what's called their Highway Safety Improvement Program priority list. It's kind of a mouthful. But each year across the state, and they break it down by urban, suburban, large municipality type stuff of locations where they're seeing higher than, I guess, what they would call standard metrics in terms of safety at various intersections and corridors across the state. New to that list this year was the intersection of Brent and Main. It was actually ranked 170th out of 514 locations that were above the average in that suburban category. The key metric is 30% is what ODOT classifies as an intersection that could be problematic in terms of injuries. At this particular intersection, it's slightly above that metric at 32%, and that's what triggered it to be on the list for this year. As a result, I think you kind of have to strike while the iron is hot. This intersection has been on at least my radar as the engineer for a good six or seven years now. Whether it's added turn lanes, traffic signal modifications, roundabout, it does need to be looked at in terms of what would be the best metric to improve safety there. Consequently, at the intersection to the south of here, too, that would be at Haroon and Holland-Sylvania, we had tried to secure funding for this some time ago with the county engineers' office. That was in 2018. They, at the same time, had a County Engineers of Association of Ohio Safety Improvement Program that we jointly applied for that, and we were not successful. So what we'd like to do is bring that intersection in with this for the traffic study, review them both, and then after the study's completed, we can make a good informed decision about how to proceed with both of those intersections. We reached out to DGL Consulting Engineers. They are the engineer who is working or will work on the Brent and Haroon intersection. So we reached out to them, and they prepared a proposal in the amount of $41,000 to prepare this study. And then should we decide to submit a safety application, prepare that as well. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, Mr. Shaw, is this actually information on the number of injury crashes? So 32% of the crashes at that intersection were injury crashes. Is that how this is discerned?
Correct. Generally, in their safety improvement program, if you are below 30%, they won't even, they won't look at your application. It's not, it's not interesting enough to them to consider it for safety funding. So because we're just above that metric, it now spurs their interest.
What sort of funding do we think that might become available?
Yeah, this is the best program of the federal ones that's usually at our disposal. It's 90-10, so 90% covered, 10% local, and it covers all phases. So that would be design, engineering, right-of-way, construction. It covers the full gamut. So it is the best program to try to get to.
Thank you. So they're not aware that we have already are considering roundabouts or any other mitigating efforts?
Yeah, we, we had some information, I'm going to say about four or five years ago, that went with a smaller study to review all three that indicated maybe a roundabout might be good. It also said some traffic signal, added capacity lanes to kind of increase some capacity might work, too. So, but this, this would formally look at. It was really a high-level effort in 2018 just to kind of see what was up. But this would, this would run the full gamut and figure out what's best.
So this would really give us a leg up?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Applications are due in March of 2025. So the goal would be to conduct the study, have everything prepared kind of around Christmas time, and then make it, make some choices about how to submit our application for the March 25 solicitation.
Mr. Shaw. Out of that list of 514, do we have other intersections in there or other intersections above the 30%?
Sylvania and McCord is always a problematic one there. That needs a lot of work to get that to function correctly. We've had some loose discussions with the county engineers' office about that intersection. I don't sense the same desire to want to tackle that one just yet. It would take both of our agencies to cooperate on that to get something there to work.
Well, that one's going to get worse.
With the gas station.
Yeah. I would drive that every day, of course.
It does need some work.
Administration recommends accepting this proposal from DGL Consulting Engineers and we prepare ordinance 100, 2024. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number 100, 2024. Accepting the proposal of DGL Consulting Engineers LLC to provide professional engineering services for the Brent Road and Main Street and Haroon Road and Holland-Sylvania Road intersection improvement projects, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $41,000 for non-passages and emergency measures.
Second. Seconded for passage of ordinance number 100, 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 100, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to note that this is the type of project that, over the years, the city has done a really good job of identifying and identifying sources to help us. And it is a, it just shows the quality of the people we have in the administration and the effort of the administration to bring these to council, and we really appreciate this. And we're glad you're carrying on the tradition and hope we can continue to support you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, on to agenda item number six. We have proposed ordinance 101, 2024, and this is to an authorized entering agreement for the Regional Addiction Diversion Program. Ms. Bryning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a revised agreement or an extension of the program that has been utilized by the Sylvania State Court since 2015. Magistrate Cole sent it to me a few weeks, couple of weeks ago and asked that council approve it so that they can continue to send defendants to the treatment facility to try to get some help with their addiction services. There's no increase in the cost, and it's just a, there's no added bed space. There, it's just one and a half beds, which is the same that we, the court has been using since 2015. So they are asking for its approval. It's, I believe it's about $15,000 a year.
And this is a treatment versus an incarceration program?
Correct. Yes. Yep. And it's just operated through the county authorities for everybody.
Very liberal of the city, but I'm 100% in support.
All right, we do have ordinance 101, 2024 to approve this extension. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 101, 2024 and read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement for the Regional Addiction Diversion Program at the Correctional Treatment Facility. On behalf of the City of Sylvania, Ohio, with the Board of Lucas County Commissioners, I move for passage of ordinance number 101, 2024 as an emergency measure.
Second. It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number 101, 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 101, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda item seven is proposed ordinance 102, 2024 concerning entering into an agreement for the South Brier Shopping Center facade signage improvements. Ms. Bryning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I believe you are all aware, we've had a little bit of an issue with the South Brier Shopping Center. The way the facade is constructed, just by its design, any sign that's, any sign for a new tenant that is installed there does not comply with our sign code. They're always bigger. So we were working with the prior owner of this center to improve the facade, and had kind of told him that we would not be approving any more signs if he didn't replace the facade to comply with our sign code. Well, unfortunately, he sold the center to a new owner, and the new owner was not aware of the facade issue. So, Mr. Ilyev, we've worked with him, and he's agreed to construct a new facade, and, but has just asked for some additional time to do that. So the agreement that we've worked out with him for your consideration requires a new facade to be constructed by December 31st, 2026. And, and this agreement will be recorded so that if this center gets sold again in the meantime, the new owner will be on notice that this is an issue that needs to be addressed. They're not substantially larger, and it's just, it's actually just kind of what the sign is mounted to that then gets mounted to the facade, which I'm sure the mayor really appreciating the description of that.
It's just an old-style, an old-style facade.
Yeah.
Across the top of the buildings. The plan commission had a fairly confrontational exchange with this applicant maybe five or six months ago. He challenged every member of the plan commission to take his position, which was nothing needed to be changed. That wasn't the city's position for several years, and I'm glad that this agreement has been negotiated and that he's willing to sign it as well. As a part of this, he's also, I'm told, going to enforce the window signs, the window lights.
Yes.
That are appearing in that center as well.
Yes, that's correct. And he's also agreed to any new signs. We've, the pictures that you see attached, the top one is the Promenade Shops, which has the uniform color behind them. So we've just asked if he will enforce that as well in the, in two, a little over two years until the new facade gets constructed. So we would recommend its approval. He's been pleasant to work with, and I just think it's important to get this recorded.
Louisville Title?
Yes, Louisville Title is owns the, it's, they own it as trustee. I'm at 2511 Oregon LLC as the beneficial owner. So Louisville actually did sign the agreement because they're the owners so that we can get it recorded.
All right, we do have ordinance 102, 2024 to approve this. Mr. Hanam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move adoption of ordinance number 102-2024. Move adoption as an emergency measure and read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with Louisville Title Agency for Northwest Ohio Inc., trustee of whom 2511 Oregon LLC is the beneficial owner, for facade sign improvements at the South Brier Shopping Center, 4981 South Main Street, Sylvania, Ohio. I move adoption of ordinance 102-2024 as an emergency measure.
Second. Seconded for passage of ordinance number 102, 2024 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 102, 2024 is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda number eight is a request from the Service Director to request letters of interest for the design services for the Brent and Haroon Roundabout Project. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a reminder, this is one intersection to the east of just what we were talking about. This one is a funded project in TMA COG's Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program. We were successful with that in 2023. We have come to the spot in the schedule where we are ready to start engineering design work in 2025 for the improvement. And the first step when you have federal funds is to request letters of interest from those engineers interested in designing the project. As a result, we would request authorization to proceed with that process.
Senior members around the table may remember that Brent Road did not use to go east of Main Street. You used to stop, and you'd have to turn south on Main Street and then turn left on Haroon to make that improvement. And that was one of the first big pushes of my administration 28 or 29 years ago to push that through. And it took a mediation to buy the property of the property at the northwest corner of Brent and Haroon. But we got it done. And it has become a major thoroughfare with all the people living out in the township come through to get to the expressway. That's why we need to make improvements to that intersection. But if you can imagine not having that stretch of road there, it was a real bottleneck before. We need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that.
Yes.
Joe, that, that intersection on the, I guess it's the west side, there's a lot of vegetation there. Is that something that, that they'll look into as they design that?
Of course.
When they look at, you know, I'm, I mean, I assume there may be some eminent domain issues there, but there's a lot, lot of vegetation. If we're going to do a roundabout, you're going to be able to see what's coming. So that's, I just want to throw, throw that on the radar. Not that I would expect you would forget that, but.
The evergreen trees on the north side of Brent Road, they were part of the settlement in the mediation so that the property owner could have some privacy on his property. The city also agreed for 10 years to shovel the sidewalk of snow because he got all that new sidewalk, and he didn't want, he was in a wheelchair, and he didn't, couldn't do that.
Yeah.
But absolutely, we have to make it a safe roundabout location, and I'm sure the engineers will.
I just still don't know that vegetation is normally an issue, but it, it will be there.
Agreed.
All right, I need a motion authorizing the Service Director to request these letters of interest. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm making motion to authorize the administration to begin the LOI solicitation for design and engineering services for the Brent and Haroon Roundabout Project.
Second.
Moved and seconded to authorize Service Director to begin the letter of interest program for, request for this project. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Agenda item nine, we have had Mary Morrison as our representative on the TARDA board for several years now, and she has been very successful, as has the TARDA board, in improving public transportation in the area. Mary serves as the chair of the board and would like to continue as the representative of Sylvania, and the TARDA management would like to have her continue as the chair of their board as well. So it puts us in a very good position. I know that just last week, Mr. Sanford went to a demonstration project over in Cleveland. If you'd like to talk about that for a second, Phil.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I was invited from TARDA and the City of Toledo to look at this, they call it the BRT or the Bus Rapid Transit Program. I read the material before going, but not, didn't really grasp what it meant. And they have a great setup in Cleveland. We met at their offices on Thursday morning, and there's two routes, main routes on the east side of Cleveland, one on the east and one on the west. One on the west is Clifton that runs out to Lakewood, a suburb of Cleveland. And then the one on the east is on Euclid that runs through Cleveland State University, Case Western, the Cleveland Clinic, and University Hospitals. You know, two really busy routes. And the, the concept is to run as many buses similar to a rail train or a subway or something that had, would have multiple runs on the same route all day at, at specific times to bring people in and out of the core of the city and whatever. And economic development has happened along those lines, and ridership has increased. TARDA is looking at doing this on Monroe Street. And if you look at any map of the greater Toledo area, you have Monroe Street, which actually, if you follow it on a larger map, you could tie it into Memorial Highway running through and up into Michigan. It's probably was the rail line or main mode through the city. Monroe goes right through the city and, and, you know, from Sylvania to downtown Toledo, and you could actually go across the High Level Bridge and Woodville Road goes out to Almore. It's really the same route all the way through the community. But TARDA is just looking at running it from downtown out to, out here to Sylvania. And in Sylvania, and I was talking to Laura Kaprowski, the director, on Thursday when we were on, we got to go on, on the both routes, which was really interesting to see how it's set up and the different stations they have, very nicely designed to, the, the people using the service can, you know, gather it on the curb and whatever. And, and so the idea then would just to, coming to Sylvania, not only Flower Hospital, but Lord's University and, and our downtown would all be points that could be included in this loop that would then head back in. You've got Franklin Park Mall that's on Monroe Street. You've got Toledo Hospital that's on Monroe Street. You've got the Museum of Art that's on Monroe Street. So you've got a lot of, lot of designations. And what, what also happens in those other areas, the, the east side, when in Cleveland, I mean, they're right on top of the line. So it was just, we saw all kinds of people all day. The, the west side's a little different, but the people moved to get, you know, if they're, they live out in Lakewood, they know to get to Clifton, and they can take the route right into town. And that would include for going to football, baseball, other games going in. So I could see how this would even eliminate, you know, the, the shuttles that we have out here. You would just have to wait for the, the line and go right down Monroe Street, and you'd be at the, you know, different things that are in downtown Toledo. So it's very early stages, but I'll just keep everybody abreast. There was a group of about 15 people from the area that, that went.
I only had Bill talk about that because Laura Kaprowski has brought TARDA many years forward from its previous operation. And I think part of that goes hand in hand with our representative and the president of the board, Mary Morrison. And I ask you to confirm my reappointment to her as our representative on the TARDA board. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move that the city council confirm the appointment of Mary Morrison to the TARDA board.
Second. Moved and seconded to confirm the mayor's appointment of Mary Morrison to the TARDA board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're up to agenda item 10. Are there any committee reports to be made at this time? Agenda item 11A has been added to set a finance committee meeting. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schreier, you had indicated in your timing that the 14th, 15th, 16th of October would, would be.
That whole week, anytime during that whole week, Monday through Friday, or?
I'll be interested in doing it in the morning on the 14th, on Monday, but about later on. That's between two council meetings. Would that work for everybody? Say 6 o'clock, 5:30?
Are we talking about the 14th?
14th.
You're talking October?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to have another meeting then that we can cancel.
Probably. That was what I was going to say.
So that works. I think that works.
So that works? Okay.
What time?
6 o'clock? Okay. I'll make a motion then to set a, a finance committee meeting at 6:00 PM on October the 14th. Traditionally, we do these in the administration building, finance committee room. Is that okay with everybody? So I'll set, make the motion to set it at the finance committee room at 6:00 PM on October the 14th.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to set a finance committee meeting on Monday, October the 14th, at 6:00 PM in the administration building finance conference room to review the budget process. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we'll have the clerk post that meeting. This is a meeting where often more than the finance committee attends, and you're all welcome to be there, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Any other committee referrals or meetings to be set at this time? Is there any? Is there any further business for city council's consideration this evening? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and this city council stands adjourned until its next regularly scheduled meeting 13 days from tonight. On Monday, September 17th, at 7:30 PM in these council chambers. Thank you. All for attention.